The chief and Joanna Neal are here. Did I record it? All right. Is your thing on?
Yes, it is. Good morning. I'm Joanna Neal, the accounting director. I'd like to go over our 2019 budget for our fire department. We have a big question. There's two, actually, there's two presentations in the packet. And it has to do with our millages for our pension for the fire. And we bring it to the board to actually ask your recommendation on the millage that we should post for that pension. That does not have to go out to the voters. You know, you can decide what that is. And we need to have that information actually today because the L-4029 that goes into the county clerk, that's due on the first of October. So that's why we need our special meeting today. So I have the narrative. It's up on the screen. And I don't know, your presentation packet should have that on there as well. So the yellow highlighted area is actually the question that we have that is our concern. And you'll see that at 1.2 mils, which is what it currently is now, it's at $1,545,509. And at what I project to be what's needed to match the actual expense for the pension, which is the pension and the OPEB together. And we'll see that on the line by line as we go through that. That total is $1,766,200. So that is actually the biggest thing that we need to look at today, along with all the other line items that we have.
Joe?
Yes.
And Larry. My understanding is that you're also going to go out for different actuarial companies to see?
Yes. The board, the pension board has recommended to go out and look for new actuaries to look into, you know, getting a new one if we need. So our actual, the pension increases were due to a lot of assumptions that were made on the actuarial reports, which I did not print out for you, but they are on the website. And there's, the biggest influence was that the actuaries recommended that we go from 7.5 to 6.5. A whole percent decrease in our investments, which really reflected and caused everything to actually jump really quite high.
And we have to fund those actuariales or?
We get a qualifying statement, which this is not a good thing. They just don't get a good audit statement on it.
And the increase is .17 from 1.2 to 1.3712 in order to cover?
Right. That's the portion in the yellow. Yep.
I'm sorry. That's to cover the change in the, going from the interest rate of 7.5 to 6.5?
Correct. So if we go to the, the actual, if we want to leave the narrative for a second and go to the first set of, I think you have this one in your packet?
It's in the back of each one of the?
Oh, this one is in the back? Okay.
It's actually, no, it's in here, but there's, after your numbers for 1.2, then there's a sheet. And then after the numbers for 1.3, there's a sheet.
Okay.
It shows, you know, the cost and the fund balance related to those specific mils. That sheet's in each one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. I'm like, okay.
It's behind each pack, each, each.
All right. Well, the packet has the blue, the blue squares here. Yes, thank you. This is the one that I actually do to come up with projections. And I have one for each one of the mils that are in question. The first one, I think in the packet is the 1.3712. Okay. So you can, you can see down through here, through the years, we have 2017 revenue, which is the 2016 tax roll. That's an actual. The 2018 revenue, which is the 2017 tax roll, that's actual. So those are what we have done so far. And then the budgeted amount would be that 2018 tax roll for the 2019 revenue. And that's what's in question. And on this sheet, it has all of the millages that we have. And then the total that the millage would be. So you can see there. And then you can see how the revenue at the bottom, where the green lines are, that's how that's affected. I probably should have put the 1.2 right beside it so you could look at the differences.
We also received our healthcare rates Monday, right?
Right. And that, that did increase. We budgeted originally when you got your budget in August, it was at 15% increase. It went to 22.4. Yeah. So this, the one, the packet you have now reflects that. I changed that yesterday for you. So the, so the big difference is, is the, is the amount, the only difference on these worksheets is the amount of the revenue expected for the fire pension and the different millage rates. The $1,766,200 and the $1,545,509. So I don't know if we just want to go down each line on, on the? Yes. So I don't know if you just want to go down the, like I said, the only difference in each one of these are just going to be that, the millage for the, the fire pension. So if we want to go down each one of the line items, we can do that. Do this a little different than I did last year because I didn't have time to make up the big presentations. So we can just go down each line item and see the differences. And I just wanted to let you know how I actually came up with the projected amounts for the millages revenues. I do want to note on the first page, page one, there's a line item 206-000-0004, 05-000. It's in lieu of taxes. That amount we have at zero, that amount should be 8,609. That should be a projected amount. And I didn't, I didn't catch that until this morning. So that was my error. And it doesn't change the ending that I have for you, but by two tenths. And so I'll explain that when we get to that last page where I show you where the percentage, where we're at it percentage wise.
So this is the pilot?
That's actually the essential services that Clark East Towers has to pay the fire and the, the police. That is a set amount. They pay a total of $20,400. It's a pilot, but it's, it's a set amount that, that they pay for those two things. That's different than the, they do pay a pilot amount as well. Based on their net revenue and expenditures. And that's calculated. Mr. Winters does that once a year with them. But this is, this is different. This is, this is specifically for the essential services.
Do we put in our revenue stream the, do we call it a pilot from ACM? And it's, and it's, and that all goes through the general fund?
That's correct. It's in general fund.
I just had one other question too, kind of a general question. Um, it's okay. When we like projected the millages and stuff, you know, when we went out for the fire increase, were we planning on keeping the pension and healthcare in separate and not in their actual fund? Or is this increase due because of the change in the interest?
Change in the interest.
Change in the interest.
We're planning on using the millage rate, approved voter millage rate to do the, to any increases?
What happens when we had, when we had the actuary at 7.5 and they, they forced us to push it down to 6.5, we have 27 million in the retirement fund. So 1% of that is $270,000 less that we will not make because of the 1% difference.
For the projections, yeah.
And so that's why we're being forced to put more money into the, to the fund.
So when we did the millage rates, we were just planning on keeping the millage for the fire pension the same?
Correct.
And that we weren't expecting increases? Or if we did, we were thinking the general, their fund would pick it up?
That's how it's, in the draft budget, that's how it's presented.
Yeah, but I'm thinking about when we actually voted the millage, was that?
The pension, the pension millage has never been out for a vote.
I know that. But what I'm saying is when we did, when we calculated all the numbers and we figured out, oh, this is the increase we need.
When we did the L-4029, the 1.2 covered the actuary at 7.5%.
Investment.
And that would have been for the length of the millage that we were planning on?
So that you, the pension millage was voted in the 50s?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So we didn't set, we've, at one time, the lowest was .4. Now it's up to 1.2, which is the highest to cover it. Then you have a separate millage. I think you're talking about capital?
No, yeah, no. What I was trying to figure, yeah, what I was trying to figure out is did we calculate that? Or were we just thinking that would be the same? Or we just figured we would just vote, do like we're probably going to do today, vote in the increases?
Right. That's always been, that's always been, it's always been separate. The thought was for that to be separate.
No, I know that, but I didn't, well, it used to be in the fund, but I know that we, in more recent history, we kept it.
Right, because we didn't have enough in the operations to cover.
I didn't, no, I don't remember the discussion. Maybe we never had it.
We did not have it.
That's what I was thinking.
Discussion on what?
That we didn't discuss, like, okay, like when we figured out, I know we did the capital, but we also looked at the millage.
You mean in the draft budget?
No, when we did the millages.
We did not discuss any amounts.
That's what?
The .5 mils for the?
No, she's talking about just the regular, when we had to renew?
Like the pension, when we did our calculations, we figured out?
Not pension. When we did the operation millage, that's what you're talking about, correct? We did not discuss any amounts. We just, you, we went separate.
The understanding was that we would just put that over there?
Yeah.
In the separate millage?
Right.
Or on the L-40.
Yeah, I think we were in a time, I think we were in a time, we were in a time crunch for that, I believe. And I don't think there was any committee or discussion on that when, when we had to renew those. Those had to be out right away, if I recall. Those had to be out right away.
Yeah, we did take them out the year of the 16 so that we didn't have to have a special election.
Right.
Thank you.
Any questions on revenues?
Yeah, is there any, any questions on the revenue portion before we move on then? I do have to make, and I will make that change. I do apologize. I'll make that, but it didn't affect a lot. Okay, so let's move on to our expenditures, which is on page two, starts on page two. These are our general operation expenditures. Not a lot's changed on there. We did not put any wage increases because that'll be under negotiations. So there is no wage increases for this, just to kind of let you know that that'll come back to the board after any negotiations with the union that's been met. And on the first page, is there any, any questions that we have on each individual one? The only big difference, like I said, was the health and healthcare insurance. We have, we had it budgeted at 15%. It did go up to 22.4, which is reflected in these, these new ones right now. So we did increase.
I just had, I had a, when we like go out for the health insurance, like, is there any other way? I mean, that's just such a big increase. It's like 7% increase.
It has to do with the experiences that we have. We have, we had some very significant ill, ill people hospitalized stays. We can't change that, that's the experience that we have. Now, some years, we don't go up so much because we have more healthy people. But this, this past, I think they do it in an 18-month block. Is it eight? I think it's an 18-month block that they look back.
So you get insurance and if you use it, then maybe you go up more.
Yep.
So I'm, I'm one of those people that you'll see for the next experience report. Sorry.
Don't be sorry, Joanna.
Sorry. Got the knee out of the go.
Karen, Karen had mentioned yesterday that there was five, Karen Wallen, that there was five employees, wherever they may have been, was in excess of $700,000. So they had hospitalization and some type of treatment, procedures, whatever it was. But those five were 750-some thousand dollars.
Is that combined?
Just the five of them. It doesn't count the other 100 folks.
And that's like one night stay probably?
So in, anytime you go out, even to find a new healthcare coverage, they're going to look at your experience. So, you know, we're kind of?
Yeah, I understand. I'll thank you. That makes sense.
Yeah.
So it was 9%, I think last year, we budgeted 15, so it covered it. So we budgeted 15 again and it went up to 22, so.
Yeah. So I guess like the average of those two years is probably?
We do have a company, what are they called, Brenda? Healthcare company that looks at ways to cut and do we need to change stuff?
But when this happens?
There's not anything you can?
And that's what it's for.
Thank you.
So do we have any other questions on the first page? That kind of goes through just all the basic wages, fringes? I do want to point out though, on, on page two, we do have two new line items that we moved from the capital line item up to the operations. And that was for, let's see, what's the number? So the last six numbers are 741-100 and 741-200. That's for the fire protective gear. I think gear is, is basically fitted to each person. I didn't think we needed it in the capital because it's, I don't really capitalize it because it's geared to each individual. So we're putting it in the operation expense because that's part of their service equipment that they need.
Do we, do we change that gear every year, chief? Or once they get it, isn't it good for a certain number of years?
I try to use like a five-year rotation on the gear, do 20% annually.
But we needed more this year, correct?
Correct.
It's one of those years.
We had some new hires coming in.
It's one of those years where a lot of stuff needed to be updated.
We're also doing the boots, helmets, changing arms, gloves.
So I just kind of wanted to point that out because you'll see that's a big blank all the way over there until what we have budgeted.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This might be a really ignorant question. Just help me under, I, maybe I don't understand like the whole working, like I know firefighters do the longer shifts, but what is the, like the firefighter food allowance? It's like more than we pay for education. So I just wanted to understand like what, that's like $2,500 a month for food?
What line item? Sorry.
It, oh, I'm sorry, Joe. It is 206-206-000708206.
Oh, with the food and the allowance. Yes.
Yeah, just I, what, can you explain that to me or?
Would you like to take that one?
And I like to feed people. Don't get me wrong. I just want to understand what that, that's a lot of money.
Contractually, because they work the 24-hour shift, the township and their contractor has it so that they pay them for meals. They pay them a set amount for meals.
Okay.
I think it's $1,300 per employee.
Okay. For the year?
That goes to the employees.
In the narrative, it says that $1,300 times 18 divided by 65.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
It explains what that number is a little bit more.
I believe the caveat is for the new employees after 2014, that amount.
It was 1,300. It went down to 650.
650, yes.
And so when you see them at the grocery store, they're buying their dinners so they can go home, back to the station and make it?
That's totally, I don't mean to, it's great. They need to eat, of course. But just that in comparison with like the education fund is interesting, but it's good. Good for them.
They negotiate it?
Yeah, good for them. That's good.
That is a negotiation.
See the more senior people get more food and love, so it's pretty nice. Thank you.
22.
Yes.
Thank you. I, um, the difference in the fire comp time payout, the pretty hefty increase, what explanation behind that? And what is it, I guess?
What's that number?
It's, um, 708.007 behind the 206. It's in the 206s. It's like 10 items down. Fire comp time payout, it was $45,000 in '18. It's proposed to be $72,224 in '19. And it's 206-206-0070807.
Yeah. And in the narrative, it just says that this is, we have to pay out the comp time to firefighters. So this year, they've accumulated?
So will it be more in time in the?
More next year?
Explain that they can take comp time instead of overtime?
People retire or something?
You're right. Well, they can take comp time in lieu of overtime. And I want to put it, sometimes they bank the comp time for obvious reasons when there is a negotiated pay increase coming up. So instead of taking the overtime pay, they take it as comp and then they exhaust the bank once they get the increase.
So is that why you're projecting an increase? Because they all banked it last year and they're going to kick it out this year?
Some of that, a little of that. And then you have a lot of the new employees are not able?
Almost double.
People want to drop or retire?
The new employees, their banks are low. And then you've got the older employees that enter into the drop and exhaust those banks also.
So I have to?
They save up the comp time before they go in the drop.
I'm just trying to figure out why are you projecting an increase that's that large?
So there could, there could be. And I, and I don't have the information in front of me. And Karen Wallen would know that, our human resources manager, she would know that better. But I believe we might have a couple people that'll be entering into the drop. And so when we have these amounts, there are an estimate, we see these banks. We're, and before, we were only estimating a certain amount. But with the, if that happens, if people go into the drop or they retire, then we're paying that all out. So we're, we're estimating the full amount that we have in, as a possibility. Now, whether we hit that or not, it might not be. Maybe they'll keep it in their banks and we won't pay out a whole 75,000.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one question about, it's a little further down the And again, forgive me, Joe, if this is like an ignorant question, but like it's for health phys, or hospital physicals. But, and maybe chief, you can help me understand if it's different for firefighters. But wouldn't that be something that their health insurance already covers? Like, why do we have to budget more for something that's typically covered under a health insurance plan?
Well, this is, you might say a more in-depth physical. This also includes their fit test for their?
Like respirators?
Respirators, SC, self-contained breathing apparatus. It does the blood work. I just went through it. The blood work, eyesight, hearing. And it's done, they also, when I say the blood work, we also do the heavy metal screening, which is part of, could relate to the cancer presumption deals also for firefighters. So it's, it's a more in-depth type of physical.
Yeah, it's just interesting to me. I mean, because it's all like, what, what I'm hearing you say is all like preventative care. So I just don't, I, it's just interesting that our health insurance plan doesn't cover those services.
The flu shot portion of it, that is included in his physical.
Annual physical and your fit test for respirator, just, I mean, that's fine if it's not covered. I just think.
And it's also a?
It's interesting that it's not.
It's also a myosia requirement, especially for firefighters, to have this type of screening done annually.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know a couple of years ago, when we did negotiate, we, we negotiated that they use their health insurance to do the physical.
Yeah.
And that's when a lot of stuff came out.
Like it came back?
It was, just wasn't feasible to.
Okay.
And you have one company do it?
Yes, this one company did.
Versus?
If the board recalls, we, we bought it back because we had another issue with a firefighter who's since retired or separated from the township. But that was a way of getting a baseline on their condition. And we knew there was something amiss, so. To reinstate, to help the physicals, it kind of brought it to a head again, to know that they weren't duty fit.
Well, I know at Ford's, when people worked in areas that you might be more likely to have breathing issues and stuff, they always did it for the exact reason, for the baseline. So if you ended up with injuries later on, then, which is hard to do when you're all going a bunch of?
Right, different.
Yeah. Especially when it was required, like you said, by myosia to, to do that so that you could tell the impact of whether you're working with lead or whatever it was that you were working with.
Thank you.
I had a question right below that one. And that's the, you took down the healthcare tax from 22,000 to 1,000. Just wondering, what is that?
Yes. So last year, well, I don't know how many years ago now it's been, maybe five years ago, we had to start paying taxes. When Obamacare came out, we started having to pay in taxes on our healthcare. When they first started doing this, they just billed us separately on that. So it would be like the whole group and here's a tax that you owe us. I think I broke that down into one of my things, what that tax was for. And we just had it separate. Now, last year, they pushed it into our monthly premium. So it's reflected in the premium for each person now. So that's why we don't need a big line. The 1,000 that you see is still for dental. So dental, we do pay taxes on. So that's why it went down and that's why you see that. Madam Chair?
Yes. Hi. Sorry, sorry about being a little tardy this morning, but. So I want to explain next. I may ask some questions that are redundant. So first things first, I guess I'm trying to figure out, why is this possibly is needed? I know obviously we're, based on the information that's been presented in front of us, it appears that it's some type of shortage. Where did the shortage occur? How did that shortage come up?
That's in the, the pension and the OPEB expenditures for our retirees. We do have a millage that we have to cover for that expense. But when we got the actuarial report in August, they had changed the actuarial company, Gabriel Roder, had suggested that we go from a 7.5 investment to a 6.5. So that assumption alone, bringing down 1%, lowered our investment, like, would you say 200?
270, well, 27 million, 1%.
So, you know, when the assumptions, any assumptions change in the actuary report, then of course your, your expense back to the funded liability, what your portion would be, is going to increase. So that's what happened on this, both with the pension, which increased by the one. And then also on the OPEB, they increased the actuary report. I do have the actuarial reports on our website now. You can go to our departments under human resources. And you can look at those actuary reports right there, the full reports right in there. I can read off the assumptions for you. There's several. It's not just that investment, but that's the big one that, that really hurt quite a bit. But the, on the OPEB, on the OPEB though, it went from the, OPEB, OPEB meaning healthcare, sorry.
Right.
So on the OPEB, they, their only recommendation was for the fire department. It wasn't for the other funds that we have, you know, for our regular general, which actually is in MERS. That MERS takes care of all the investments for everyone else. Fire has their own. Their only suggestion was for fire to decrease from 7% down to 6.5%. We did have to, the board, the fire pension board had to really fight hard in order to get that. We had our investment manager there as well. We had to do some reallocation in order for us to even go to the 6.5. They wanted us to go to 6.25 was the highest they wanted us to go. And so we really had to go in there and change some things in order for them to? them to keep it at a six point five. So that was one of the things. Also, um, we had price inflation that went from three percent to two point five percent, and, um, wage inflation from three point five to three percent. These are all calculations that they're using in their actuarial runnings.
It's all-
It's, it's just all.
Big old formula.
Yeah. So those, those did change them quite a bit, so that's-
So, okay, so my, I guess my question is that, um, there was, um, no way to know before, um, August, when they came with these new numbers?
No, we just got-
That these new numbers were going to be new numbers?
Actually, I was out on the twentieth for my surgery, August twentieth, they came in that week I was out, and I told, I told Tammy, I said, Tammy, please, I said, they're coming in, so, look for that.
Tammy was out.
So she was able to get that before she went out the next week, so, no, we did not, you know.
We just got our health court care numbers Monday.
Yes.
So I literally-
Those did change.
Wow, okay, so, um, I guess-
That's why it's a draft budget, just-
Yeah, yeah. So I guess basically, um, and this is normal, they normally would possibly in the future, they could come back and come in August change, um, with the numbers too. So I, I guess my question's more like future planning, there's really not a lot of room for future planning if, if they're going to come and, you know, change the numbers up and down in August.
We did not see that coming, I, I, that was a big surprise. I do however want to say that MERS has also said that they're going to be looking at theirs, but when we had told our rep in the area what that-
Assumption.
Assumption was, she said, I don't think ours will be that low, but we, they, they're going to be looking at theirs, so for next year, it'll probably hit MERS.
Okay, interesting, all right, thank you.
All right.
The biggest, um, question is, do we want to increase the pension fund to pay for the, um, the cost for the actuarial? Or do we want to absorb that in operations, which leaves us with a nine thousand dollar draw from fund balance, as well as, um, a much lower fund balance than we operate in? We usually like to, I said ten percent, and we really always have fifteen percent. It's just low.
It, it's low, it's been low. So, on page four of the, of the green sheets, is, is the pension expenses? Was there any more questions before we move on to the pension stuff? Was there any more questions on the operations side? I think we hit on anything that was really a whole lot.
A general question about the actuarial.
Could you turn your-
Thank you. I know that you said that they recommended going out, do you, um, anticipate bringing that to the board soon, or, when would we do that?
For the actuarial.
To go out for the-
Company.
Oh, we haven't even talked to the board yet, at, at the pension board.
Okay.
Well, the pension board has made a recommendation to our investor to get us some different actuaries that he would recommend.
In a letter.
And, and they went through, when, when they went through and showed this, they showed about seven different or ten different actuaries. And they were, you know, all actuaries weren't at six, they weren't all six point five percent. So, so we're looking, and, and we, we're just looking to see what, what's out there, if there's, um,
When they said-
Less strenuence, I guess.
I said, Barry, when they do that, or Javon, whoever can answer, if you know, when they do that six point five, is that a, is that a look back, or is that a projection based on what's happening in the economy, um, of what they're expecting to happen with the interest rates?
Yeah, it's pretty much what they're expecting, uh, the future investments to be, you know.
And when they do the investments and stuff, because you, you know, they always say, you know, to have, be diversified, like supposedly when times are coming up now and the interest rate's going up, that, that the money should be more in bonds, likes, but they, they do that, but they're still not saying it's hedged enough to keep from doing this projection? You know how they always say, keep your money at different places so that when-
We do, we do have it allocated, um, it's state mandated how we allocate our funds. Um, we can't change that, that's, that's for the protection of the funds themselves, the retirement funds. In, in the actuary report, I'm sorry, I did not copy it for you, but they do give our allocations, um, it will show on here, actually, this is new this year because they, Gabriel Roder had done it, they had went out to different investment companies and, and talked with them and got rates, what they projected rates from different investment firms, and then they did an average, so that's kind of where they got the information, they didn't just pull six point five out of the air, I mean, they, they gave us documentation for it, it's, it's in the actuarial reports, and as I've said, you, you may not have heard this moniker, it is on our, excuse me, our website, under departments, under human resources, and over on the right-hand side, you can look at all the actuarial reports that we have, the full reports in there.
I guess, um, sorry, Madam Chair, a point of clarification, um, uh, Treasure Doe has said, um, trying to look at new actuaries, at least I thought I heard the last part of his comment, is, okay, the, are these actuaries coming from the state? Where are they coming from? I guess basically, are they state actuaries, actuaries that we hired? I'm a little confused about that after, yeah.
They're, they're-
The company.
They're independent companies.
They're independent companies.
There's like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then the pension board hires them, we've had Gabriel Roder for, for a long time, a lot of times we, we just look at items for what they charge, just to go out, because their fees are extremely high.
They did increase their fees again this year, so we just want to make sure that we're in the right place, that we need to be. Do, do we trust them? Yes. I just don't like the fact that they threw this on us real late in the year.
At the last minute, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, we, if we're paying, you know, no, this is just a comment, if we're paying them for a service, then they should basically, no offense, they should bring information to us a little bit quicker than August.
You're, you're much nicer than what I was when I was speaking with them, so.
That's why they said, we'll get someone else.
And, and it's, and it's basically, you know, how safe do you want to be, and, you know, and of course, we have the guidelines from the state of what we have to follow, but, you know, we could change those allocations a little bit, but when you do that, it makes your investments maybe a little less, uh, s- secure as far as, uh, going up or going down.
And, as I said, you know, I don't think that we're going to hit six five, and if we do more, that's great, we just pay our unfunded liability a lot faster. It, worse comes to worse, we're not losing anything, we'll, you know, we're just, we're having to pay a larger, um, required annual contribution right now, but if we do get the higher interest, the next year they'll adjust that ARC, annual required contribution, a little bit lower. So, I mean, it'll, it'll adjust out properly, it just, initially, it, it hurts.
And what are we, how much are we funded?
With the new ones, I think for OPEB, for the fire, it's at a forty one, which, so we are over the forty percent threshold, um, there. I think for the OPEB, for everybody else, it's fifty one percent. So, I mean, so we're okay on that, and also with the actuary-
I'm sorry, what was it?
Fifty what? One percent for general?
Fifty one.
Fifty one for general, yeah.
And pension is?
Let me just pull it up here. Pension. Pension is at seventy eight point six.
And then for GL?
I don't, I don't have that right now, I just have fire today. GL is actually higher than that, because the adjustment hasn't been made with MERS.
We had talked about as a board putting-
Sixty, or seventy six.
On these numbers, so that we can, you know, help fund it at a higher percentage, which in turn would reduce the, um, actuarial amount.
Right.
But we don't, you know, if you put a hundred thousand dollars down, what will that do to that fund, you know, in the payment for the next year?
Right.
Actuarial.
Right.
So I know you're talking to MERS about that.
Yeah, they take a lot of things into consideration when they came up with, with what the annual required contribution is, it's, it takes all those assumptions, all the mortality table, it, it takes a lot of things, so, you know, we just-
No, but there's a way to put actual additional dollars.
So that it lowers the liability.
Correct.
Yeah. And we did, for, for our general fund, for everything else, we did, um, actually budget higher, and we'll get into that when we get to those, we budgeted almost two thousand dollars each individual higher than what we needed to, in order to, you know, have a larger payment at the end of the year. Last year, we were able to pay, I believe, I want to say it's about sixty thousand dollars extra, I mean, doesn't, a, a little bit hurts, it helps, so. But that's, that's MERS, that's regular, this is, so, a little bit different, I just don't want to get the two things. All right, and if, if you will, um, bear with me, we want to go to, um, page six of each one of the green bar papers, so if you can flip back and forth between them. I don't have the-
You don't have the clicker?
No, I'm getting it, John, get it.
That's all right, I mean, I don't know, sure people can see it from here anyways.
It is a clicker.
She's going to the fund balance pages, is where she's going.
Yes, exactly, kind of the bottom line.
They're the last green sheet in each of the packages, and there's package for each one of the proposed millage rates. One shows a loss of two hundred thousand something.
I don't know, it's just, it's going down the side over there, I don't know what to, I don't know how to work it. Sorry, doesn't- Okay. So, so I have two, two scenarios for the, the fund balance, um, one at the millage of one point three, seven, one, two, and one at the millage that we've been doing for the last year, two years, at one point two. So if we look at the one point two, which is, you know, we don't make any change whatsoever, you can see that, um, on this red, the red section, we will be short, we will need to move from prior year fund balance, nine thousand, eight hundred sixty eight dollars. And that would leave us with a fund balance of two sixty four, one thirty eight at the end of two thousand nineteen. And on the bottom, I gave you some percentages of the revenue, which shows you where we would be at, and I, I do like to be at about fifteen, between fifteen and twenty percent to be at a healthy account. So you can see that this is not going to work this way, we would be fine, we wouldn't, just, you're not, you're not at a comfortable position at all. And then on the one point three, seven, one, two, you see that we will have some fund balance, the net revenue and expenditure is, uh, two hundred seventy four thousand, six dollars, so your ending fund balance projection for, uh, two thousand nineteen would be four hundred eighty four thousand, six thirty one. So I, I guess it's just, whatever that you, the board would like to do, um, to discuss, I can't change the amount of the required payment for the pension. So we'd either, you have to use, um, funds from the operations millage, or you could increase the millage for the pension.
Javon, I have a question, so at the end of, um, your proposed budget here, if I'm reading it correctly, it leaves us with a fund balance and, like, a six point six, two percent, or is that the four point two seven? I'm on the last.
Well, I, I did both of them, so the first one, the first one that you would see is the four point, excuse me. The first one on the one point two is, um, that's the overall, um, fund balance, the, the percentage, that would be the, um, the ending fund balance over the total revenue.
Sure.
So, and that's usually what I've always given you, is a total, but if I just took, um, the ending fund balance and took the revenue for just the operations-
The, like, nine thousand?
Yes.
Where you get the six.
Well, it's, it's only three million.
Okay, right.
So, almost four million, that would be the six, so I, I just put two of those on there, so you could see the, the breakdown.
And that's the one that you usually like, between ten and fifteen percent?
The one that's four point two seven is the one I would like between fifteen and twenty percent.
That's the big, I don't like it. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, just a quick question, the number of the, on the bottom is revenue, uh, divided by expenses, do I have it correct, is that-
Fun balance.
Fun balance divided by-
Divided by the revenue.
Okay.
So you take what your expected revenue is, how much of your expected revenue do you have?
Okay, so that's expected revenue that's coming from basically-
Millage.
A millage, right, and the millage is, uh, on this, on the first sheet, well, first or second, whichever way you go on the packet, anyway, there's a, um, millage that's at one point two percent, so that's the projected revenue based on a millage at one point two fif- percent on one, the next one is a projected revenue based on a millage, uh, at one point, at three seven, uh, one point three seven, one, two percent, I just want to make sure I'm reading it right.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, so when, I'm looking at six point six two, and then the other one, I'm looking at twelve point one four, um, if all revenue was to come in, that would be how, how much money that is available, why, what about, yeah?
That second percentage is just the millage for operation.
Just for operations, not basically-
So the, the one that's right above it, I, I put two, I put two calculations for percentages.
Right, yeah.
The one right above it, the, um, four point two seven percent, and the one that's seven five seven-
Yeah.
Is the total revenue, the, total revenue that we projected, and so you take the fund balance divided by the, the total revenue, and then that's a percentage that you're at.
Okay, so the number on the bottom is just for information, really?
Yeah, it's just kind of, you know, where are we at with the operation portion?
Okay, right, and the oper-, and the total revenue includes operations, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know, thanks.
So we do have the L forty twenty nines in the packet as well. I have them here.
Madam Supervisor. I just conferred with my math wizard down at the end of the table. The difference is, it's Larry.
Seventeen dollars per one.
Yeah, it's that, if you have a house value at two hundred thousand, so that you'll be taxed at a hundred thousand, it'll be seventeen dollars and twelve cents increase for this millage.
Okay.
If we go with the higher one, as actuaries are, as we're thinking that we need to do in order to protect our fund balance, according to what the normal accounting principles are, so that's, I just wanted to share that, and I think that's what we should do.
That's a very good idea, thank you.
My two cents.
Madam Chair, I would agree with that, increase the, uh, set the millage higher.
Oh, Brenda got to work.
So are there other questions on the budget? And this is a draft budget, we can change it, is it still continuing? We're not voting on the budget, we're just voting, having this discussion before we set, and we can even change that, we just have to send it in by, um, October first in order to set the preliminary numbers.
When do the negotiations start? Is the contract up at the end of the year? Is it the entire contract or just?
I'm sorry, is the contract up at the end of the year, is it just the wages? It's a whole contract, right, Lair, you, you're a negotiator?
Yeah, we start negotiating at the end of the year.
Is it, does it expire?
Yeah, was it? Two year?
To your contract?
It's powder cream.
Okay.
How was it?
Are there any other questions just on the, and, um, it'll be again before the board, the fire department budget, and we'll have more numbers in toward, when we get towards the end of the year, as far as expenditures as well, but we need to set the millage rate.
Thank, thank you, Javon, and just, and Chief.
I just said, you just said it would be bad, what is it? We're not, we're not going to review this budget again, are we?
We're not, we're not voting on it, we're not voting on it, yeah.
I know it comes back for, for, this is, this is our kind of presentation on this one at this point. Okay, that's what I want to make sure, as I think about all the different things we got to do.
Unless the numbers change.
Yeah.
You know, and we bring those up, and, and when we bring it to the board to vote on- we always bring up all the changes that we've had to make, if there were any.
Before we do our final vote.
Before you vote on it, yeah.
But this is our budget presentation for the fire department as we, on, as we normally do. So saying, we're not doing this one again. Unless the board wants to.
Okay. So now we're going to move into the regular agenda item. The first item is a request of the 2018 L4029.
I would move that we approve the request that includes the increase of, for the fire pension healthcare of the 1.3712 for the 2018 L4029.
Support.
Motion, Rose, support Gerald Rose, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is a request of the 2018 fourth agreement with the Washoe County Road Commission for the Nancy Park subdivision drainage improvements in the amount of $153,900. I am trying to get the Road Commission to contribute, but so far they're not.
So moves.
Support.
Motion, Eldridge, support Doe, discussion.
Madam Chair. Is this the one where, isn't, is there a gentleman that lives near this? Where is, like, area always floods? Or am I thinking of a different?
Whole street floods.
The whole street, yeah.
The guy's yard right to you.
Oh, yeah, it's collapsed, it's a collapsed sewer, sewer, water, water, storm sewer, yeah. Yeah, we've been dealing with it, the residents, for four or five years, and the Road Commission won't do it, so we have to. And this will turn it over to the Washoe County Resource Commission. And there are funds, $91,000, and a maintenance fund that could help fund this from the Water Commission, but they said that we need to approve it now in order to move it forward.
They're going to try to do it this year.
They're going to do it this year.
And Madam Chair, just yesterday, when we were going through the Steering Committee for the Park Commission and the five-year plan, this, Nancy Park, one of the things that were brought up is that it's a lot of water retention in Nancy Park because of this issue, so I just wanted to make sure people knew that also.
This isn't by Nancy Park.
Sorry.
Nancy Park is closer to Gault Village and across the street.
Okay, all right, well, I apologize.
No, oh, no, no problem. We have a motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion was Eldridge supported by Doe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is a request of Mike Radzik, who is in the building, no, in the room. You have any questions? Authorization to seek legal action if necessary for public nuisances for property located at 1480 Parkwood, 2164 Wooddale, 1282 Warner, 1503 East Michigan Avenue, and 235 Valley Drive in the amount of $50,000, which is budgeted.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion Gerald Rose, support Wilson, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is a request to approve a mailing to residents for the master plan in the amount of $9,091, contingent upon approval of the budget amendment to be budgeted in line item 101-267-00073000.
Support.
Motion Rose, support Gerald Rose. Questions? The county did agree to do a mailing to all the voters.
Oh, good.
Huh? I don't know, but two people told me to.
Yeah, because we'd heard the clerks meeting that they leadership, and then they were taking it to their board meeting, oh.
Hopefully.
And they may be doing a reimbursement, they didn't know yet. So we may be doing it, they reimburse us, they're arguing back and forth about it.
Motion support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is Budget Amendment 14. This is for the special printing that we just discussed for the master plan, for $9,091. There's a Washoe County Road Commission agreement, which was just discussed, for $153,900. And there's an increase for the motor pool vehicle maintenance, and it's for $12,000, which will be reimbursed from each of the funds.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion by Rose, support, motion by Gerald Rose, support by Eldridge to approve the budget amendments, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did add on the special meeting, the request to cancel the October 2nd board meeting, because there, it was just a lack of agenda items. And then we will start the budget reviews, the second meeting in October at 4 o'clock.
Yes, I said we're going to do those earlier.
Yeah. So that's why it's on the agenda.
Unless there's a big issue with that, I don't know, people can make 4 o'clock.
Yeah. Move to approve.
So just plan on the next few, two meetings, three meetings, the work sessions will start early, so we can cover that.
I'm glad we're doing that too, just because I, I like talking about, it's interesting.
So we need a motion support?
So move.
Motion Gerald Rose.
Support.
Support Doe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.
Meeting at?
8:50.
What time is it?
Eight, I think I need to.
8:58. Motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned at 8:58.
Thank you, and thank you, Gerald. And Chief.